We are ready now.
Okay. I'd like to call this meeting of the Munster Town Council, a regular meeting on March 21st, to order. We have roll call, please.
Councillor Schoen?
Present.
Councillor Mellon?
Present.
Councillor Tulowitzki?
Present.
Councillor Koltaritis?
Present.
And Councillor Gardner?
Present. We can all stand for a moment of silence and pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, I would like to welcome Representative Mike Andrade up to the podium to present a state congratulatory certificate to the Munster Public Works Department. Representative Andrade?
Thank you, Council President and council members, Clerk Treasurer, Town Manager, Town Attorney. Everyone else present?
Assistant Town Manager.
Assistant?
Deputy Town Manager.
Our Town Manager, and, oh, we have a new assistant Town Manager. Congratulations.
Thank you.
We need to do a special resolution just for you.
You only get one per month.
No, I'm kidding.
April 4th.
I'll make sure I get an email in regards to that, so I could stop by, make sure we give them the appropriate acronyms. Thank you so much for the opportunity. I was stuck several a month ago on I-65. I was coming back from the State House, and the storms were really bad. I think that day we had like between 24 hours, 17 inches of snow. And as I was driving back, I was there for nine hours, stuck on I-65. And when I finally got home, I was relieved to be home. It also made me think about our public work employees here in the Town of Munster and the phenomenal job they do. A lot of times, we, as public servants, we get calls, and most of the calls are very, unfortunately, sometimes challenging, because people expect, of course, high expectations from us, and we do. Our Town of Munster meets the expectations of our residents. But a lot of those phone calls are unpleasant. You know, how come this didn't get done? This didn't get done. A lot of times, we forget to oversee all the good picture in it, all the good that happens in the town. And as I was getting to my driveway, I noticed that our snowplows were out there, maintaining our streets. And it made me reckon, realize that, you know, we have to do something for public work employees. They've done a phenomenal job the last several years. So everyone knows, we've had a lot of snowstorms here lately, and a lot of snow, as I mentioned recently, with the 17 inches. It could have been a little bit more, could have been a lot of less. I did go and measure mine, and it was above 17 inches with the wind that blew some of it in. But they do a great job maintaining our streets when it comes to snow removal. They do a great job when it comes to picking our beliefs. They do a great job when it comes to the limbs. They do a great job in our parks. I had a town hall this weekend. I had a little girl named Lola, her dad Ryan, who brought Lola to my town hall in regards to how come her water fountain wasn't on in Wydell Park. And after speaking to my neighbor Jerry, who's served here for 20 years, he's like, "Michael, we don't turn it on until April 1st." I said, "I kind of figure," and I called Lola and her dad today, and I said, "You know, due to the winter and sometimes the temperature drop, our town doesn't turn it on, the water fountains, to after April 4th, to make sure that our pipes don't break, and we have to do additional maintenance to it." But it made me realize on how much our residents really have to be grateful for and appreciate the work that our employees do here, especially myself, a proud Munster resident. And so I called our Clerk Treasurer, and I said, "Wendy, can you give me a list of the employees who work for Public Works? And I know that maybe some of them might be here today, and if they're not, I know we have set up a schedule to be there tomorrow, when they come in at 7 o'clock in the morning to their prospective job, and I'm going to be there to congratulate them and give them the certificates myself." But the certificate, and I'll have one here, just an example. I think we have 34 here on my list, and I'm not going to read every single one due to the time. And I already took a lot of time, but I thought it was something to be commendable and explain why I'm doing this. Not only as a state representative, but also as a Munster resident, to show my appreciation. It's the state of Indiana, a house of representatives. You heard me known and proclaimed as Stephanie Benjamin. I'm just using her as an example. And recognition for your excellent service to the Munster community. This was actually done on March 7 of 2022. It was a couple days before we ended the session. That's why it has that date. Thus, as a member of the 122nd Indiana General Assembly, I express my deep gratitude for your year-round hard work at the Munster Public Works Department. It has my signature in the bottom, and it has the state seal. So I will be presenting all of these certificates of congratulatory to all of our public work employees tomorrow. And thank you for giving me the opportunity to express my gratitude from our state, but also as a resident of our wonderful Town of Munster. Thank you.
Representative Andrade, just through you are where we do have two of those employees here with us today. Chris Smolnik is in the back, along with David White in the back. So I'm not sure if you want to present those two, them, or if you have them, or if you just, I just want to acknowledge that both of those, no, I guess Chris does not want his, uh...
I had already warned Chris that he probably have to come up and shake his hand.
Yeah, so let's at least get a, let's at least get a picture taken here with the Chris and Dave. Dave, why don't you come up here with Representative Andrade?
Chief, you also drive plow. Want to come up here?
There, why don't you guys come up here?
He does. Don't smile too big. You'll find the plow right, right in your driveway.
That's where they turn around.
Oh, God, this doesn't end well.
Does Dan drive for us too, or is he just hanging out with Chief?
No, no. He, he actually came out and helped us. We were down a few people at that time, and I moved up the street. So he actually came out. And also Mark, uh, Chief Haidoo too. That's why I wanted to do what I know.
Okay. We'll do right here with the, with the nice pictures of the, uh...
So I want to recognize, Mark Haidoo comes out and helps us with the town plowing. He has a plow on his own truck too.
Sure.
But also Chief Shackle and other town employees that come out and help us. So, you know, it's a, it's a whole process of public works, everyone, men and women both. But I do appreciate it, you know, and I do appreciate Mark that helps us.
Thank you. And I do actually have coffee last week with Chief Shackle, and we were talking about public safety here in our town and some of the state laws. And as we were chatting, he did mention that he volunteered the other day to get it checked out. And that really, it shows the community, the unity, the leadership that we have in our town, where everyone decides, hey, I'm not, my title's not bigger than your title. We're all public servants. And it shows the unity of the team effort that we have. And Chief Haidoo and I speak regularly, just like we do with Chief Shackle. We work to the end of the phone, and as we bring the phone, and there's issues that come up here in our town, and he brings some attention that, you know, sometimes it has to do withinda, and we try to address them within the immediately. So yes, Chief Shackle, I mean, Chief Shackle and Chief Haidoo do a phenomenal job with the team effort that they do here as well. So yes, you're right, there is for them to be commendable as well.
Get a little bit closer together. We're going to get Munster in the background. Not sure if that's who it is. Ken, is it? Here we go. One, two, three.
I like, I like the subtle shape, Ken.
Very good. Okay, good. Okay.
Thank you, again, as, you know, Town Council as well. You know, I have a big district, and I'm going to have a bigger one. First, I'm willing to get re-elected this coming up year, so I will have the Town of Munster, Town of Haida, I will have the whole Town of Griffiths, and I'll have a couple businesses in Sherbo, and I will be out of Hammond. They said, "You did an excellent job. You're out of Hammond." But no, seriously, from all the Town Council members and everything that we do in different states, where we have to deal with different members of the Town Council, with our prospective jobs, I could not be more proud of Town Council that we have bipartisan support that you guys put together for our residents and for our children, for our community. And it's very commendable as well. Like I said, it's a team effort for all of us. Comes down to the leadership from Town Manager, the new Deputy Town Manager, and Clerk Treasurer, and everyone else. It really is a team effort that it takes for all of us to work together for our communities. I could not be more proud to be a resident here and your state representative. Thank you. Thank you.
And I do understand that Luke Kern, another one of our public works employees, is on the line listening. So Luke, come tomorrow morning, you'll get your certificate. Okay, next on the agenda, we have two special guests here. Mr. John Castro, our school board liaison to our redevelopment committee, but he would like to introduce our new school Town of Munster Superintendent.
Oh, sure.
Would you like to do that?
I'd love to. I didn't know I was going to get that opportunity.
Well, we want to, we want to be introduced.
All right, all right. So as you hopefully are all aware, unfortunately, Dr. Hendricks has decided he's stepping down at the end of this year, but he was very gracious in giving us plenty of lead time informing us, so we had the opportunity to get out early and begin our superintendent search. We had a number of candidates. I want to take you all through the whole process. We've discussed it at the school board side, but I wanted to take this opportunity to, since I feel the school board and the schools, excuse me, the school town and Town of Munster are very symbiotic, and they're like that in many towns, our town especially. We're very close, very close knit, very neighborhood. And so I thought it was appropriate that Mr. Howard Mee Thomas meet, bring him before you all and introduce. So I want to introduce to you the incoming superintendent of the school town of Munster, Mr. Brett Keller.
Thanks, Mr. Castro. And I'm looking forward to getting here officially. I am here this week for the full week. I'll be back in April for a few days. You may have heard that Principal Wells from Munster High has chosen to retire and move on. So I'll be doing some interviews during that week, and then I'll be back again for a week in May, officially making the move in June. So we're, we are busy packing. We are in Idaho, so just a little bit of a, of a move across the country. But my wife and kids were super excited. We do have a house offer that was, was accepted, so we think we have found a house. We're hoping everything goes through, because that was, we were nervous for a while there on housing. But yeah, very excited. I can't wait to be part of this community. One of the attractions for me was, I come from a school district where we have 57 schools and 40,000 students. The attraction of having a school district with 5,000 students and five schools, and being able to really be part of a community and get to know people in a really deep way is super attractive to me. And so we're really excited. There's a lot I need to still learn about the region and try to understand how everything works here. A lot of people I need to meet. I think when I'm here in May, I think I'm going to be spending some time with Town Manager, and I look forward to working with each and every one of you and having a good relationship. But yeah, any questions that you might have, if you have any for me?
Welcome to the family.
And when you figure out how the region works, let us know.
Congratulations on scoring a house.
That's right. Very good. Well, thank you. Mr. Keller, thank you very much. Thanks for coming by.
We appreciate your access too. I know that you're speaking at every Rotary, Lions, Kiwanis. You're meeting with a lot of leaders in the town, so thank you for that.
Very good. Moving on to the agenda, we have a public hearing with regards to the water rate increase. Is anybody here to speak on behalf of a public hearing? I don't see anybody in the audience present. Do we have anybody online?
No one has indicated that they would like to speak.
Okay. Then I will hereby close the public hearing, seeing note that no one wants to express any comments. We will move into the public comment section of the meeting, which we kindly ask that in-person public comments are limited to two minutes maximum per person and five minutes per group spokesman. We also ask that you keep your comments civil and constructive to public policy issues. Public comments may also be submitted electronically. If you have any questions or comments about an item on the agenda that you would like to have entered into the meeting minutes, please email that question to, question or comment to Town Manager Dustin Anderson. Mr. Anderson, do we have anybody online that would like to speak?
We do not.
Anybody in the, in the meeting room? Mr. Mike? Yes, sir.
Mike Gimovich, 1833 Tulane. I have questions about the questions and answers about the pay to park, because it raised more questions for me than an answer. Number one, how many parking passes per family in Munster are you giving? What the town said was two. To read what the park board letter says, it's one. Is it one or two?
At the park board meeting, they changed the recommendation of the subcommittee from one to two. So what's before, what they pass is two parking passes.
Okay. Then there is no mention of the cost of this, what the system is. It's, you're, they're saying the cost of this system is going to be borne by the outfit that's going to put it in. They're going to pay for the whole thing.
That's correct.
And the town's not paying them anything. They're going to make their money from the parking fees.
That's correct.
And what happens if they don't make their money? Do they bite the bullet?
Yes.
Okay.
Depending what you call it, bite the bullet is, but yes.
You don't, you don't, you don't make up the difference is what the bite, to me, that's biting your bullet. You said it's going to cost this much. You're expecting to make that much and more off of this, with the town getting something from the over-the-top amount. And if I don't, if I, as the outfit putting this thing in, do not make this amount, I only make this amount, the town's not going to make up that difference.
That's correct.
Okay. The other thing is, it mentions that for parking violations. Okay, well, let me back it up. The town's going to get, if they make more than what they anticipate, the town gets 80% of the overage, is what the document said. But if, for parking violations, the town's only going to get 25% of that?
That, that's correct. Now, I, I mean, Mike, I'd be happy to talk to you afterwards about some of the details of this, but that is, in effect, what we're talking about. We're getting, we're getting more, more revenue from the parking fees.
Right.
Than from the parking tickets.
Okay.
Percentage-wise.
And then you talk about putting in license plate readers.
I'm sorry. Let me first, Mr. Anderson, did you want to say something?
Yeah, I just wanted to note, Mr. Dooler, that no contract has been signed yet. So the answers that we're providing are the answers that we know at the moment.
Right.
And there will be further clarification, but in essence, it's 80% of the parking fees, right, that are paid. And then you can go, you can go ahead with your, the rest of your questions. I just wanted to note that this isn't written in stone yet. What the park board did was indicate that they were willing to continue to move down this path.
Okay.
And there will be a subsequent contract approved.
Okay. They talk about putting in license plate reader. You're going to put two of them in? One downward, close to the hotel, and another one upwardly, golf course, I'm assuming.
There'll be two readers at both locations. One reader to read the license plates coming in, and one reader to read the license plates going out.
So we'll have a total of four.
That's correct.
How do they work with the temporary plate, paper plates that people have in their back windows? Or do they?
Question we'll ask.
Good, because I'll give you my sheet of paper too, because I had to write it, put type it, so I can read it.
For that one example, Mr. Dooler, that you can have the opportunity to enter the temporary license plate into the kiosk, so they'll be able to make a reference.
Well, then you answered one of my questions. Could they, the, because they talk about an app, and I'm assuming, the kiosk that you're talking about is sort of like what they have at St. Joe, Michigan, at the, at the beach there, where you'll go up, put your license plate in, and pay for it. And then it spits out a little tag, and you drop it on your dashboard.
Very similar, but there's, there's no spitting out the tag.
No tag?
That's correct.
Okay. Then if, and again, this is, if they issue tickets for violations, and I'm gathering they're going to be mailing these out to the people in violation, how long do they have to pay before they have to pay, or they don't pay, and what do you do, what do they do after that?
That process, we can talk more about that. But that is, that is something that we have, we have control over. There's a couple different options that we have.
Okay. Like I said, I'll give you this, because some of it I didn't.
Okay.
And then my second thing is, now that the weather's getting nice, we got an issue with the Dairy Queen and their drive-through and their overflow that flows on the Ridge Road. That's a safety hazard. Can you, can they do something about that?
Thank you for bringing it to our attention.
Okay.
That's it.
Okay, thanks, Mike.
No problem.
Mike, I can add for your last question. The same thing happened with Dunkin' Donuts. Their drive-through and cars were lined up on Ridgeway.
Yeah.
And the police would come by and tell them, "Keep moving. You can't do this." And eventually, the store then rerouted its, its drive-through route, and the problem went away.
Thank you.
Okay.
I'm understanding from our Clerk Treasurer, there's somebody online that would like, is, or...
Identify themselves and get their address.
Okay.
Okay.
So, Michael Gafford, 10380 Oxford Place. So I wasn't sure if you were going to be hearing comments regarding the parking fees at Centennial Park, but I did have some questions, concerns that I didn't see any answers to these questions, so I thought I'd bring them up. What's to stop people from parking at Centennial Village or Cobblestone Park and walking to Centennial Park to avoid the fee? And the reason that those two, I find to be a very important question to be answered is, if I remember right, Centennial Village was approved with limited parking or shared parking for the, the businesses that are there. So, you know, I know people have already complained about lack of parking for the small parking spots that were so far constructed. And with the additional buildings being built, there will obviously be more parking, but more parking as well as more retail and et cetera, et cetera. And then with Cobblestone Park, you know, if you went by there today or last week, lacrosse, they, they practice there every day, or there's soccer practice, or there's XYZ practice that's put on at Cobblestone Park. And there's not a lot of spots there, so the treadway is always filled with cars, making it, you know, in my opinion, dangerous for kids to cross the street there, to get from the subdivision to the park. And if we're then going to be adding more cars that are trying to avoid paying the fee to park at the park, you know, what's the, what's, what's the workaround for, you know, making sure people aren't crowding the, you know, already lacking spaces at the park and Centennial Village?
Thank you. We have discussed the parking situation with the developer at Centennial Village. We've also approached the parking fees to try to make them not large fees. And again, there will be some signage that will go out, will be placed up. We are committed to work with the Centennial Village businesses and developer to make sure that that situation is minimized. So it is an ongoing situation, and we are addressing it and talking with the developer and the businesses. Any other questions? Okay, see none? Nobody else here? I closed the public comment session?
We have one more.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry. Sorry about that.
Different issue, I think.
Piggyback on, after Mr. Gafford, but my name is Kim, 10229 Sutton Place. Good evening, Mr. Anderson, Town Council. I have come here tonight to express a concern to you that I strongly feel needs to be addressed. On Wednesday, March 16th, I witnessed the most awful event that keeps playing in my mind over and over since the day it happened. A seven-year-old boy was struck by a car while crossing Treadway Drive to go play at the park on a beautiful day. The sound of screeching tires, impact of a small boy hitting the car, and the dad screaming are sounds that I will never forget. I was just a bystander. As I'm sure most of you are parents yourselves, please try to put yourself in the shoes of the parents whose child could have lost his life. I am here today to ask for your help to keep our children safe. I live on the corner of Treadway Drive at Sutton Place and Cobblestones. Since moving in this past October, my husband and I have been concerned about the reckless drivers that speed down Treadway. I will not even allow my small children to get the mail, and I myself even have to wait until drivers pass to get the mail in fear of getting struck by a speeding vehicle. My husband parks his car in the street intentionally just to avoid a speeding vehicle from getting too close to us and our children. Speeding drivers consist of people of all ages and are not inclusive to only Cobblestones residents. We have called the non-emergency police number to report these speeders several times. On occasion, there will be a cop sitting by the park to monitor the situation, and I'm very grateful for the response that has already taken place. I also want to thank Mr. Anderson, who personally called me to hear my thoughts and take action to help reduce speeding on Treadway. There are some beginning ideas of what can be done to reduce the speed of drivers by the park, but we must make sure that these changes and ideas will have an impact. This past Wednesday could have been a devastating day for our family and for our community, so I urge you to take action, so this type of situation will never occur again. What can we do to make sure that we don't see the reckless speeding that we do by our park? How can we eliminate the problem of children being in danger when just trying to play at the park on a beautiful day? I urge you to take actions that yield results. I'm passionate about seeing this to the end, and I want to be part of the solution. I appreciate the opportunity to bring this concern forward, and thank you for putting a sign out right by the walkway today. I really appreciate it. And there was also an officer monitoring, so thank you.
Thank you very much for your time. And, and Mr. Anderson, do you want to, you addressed the council earlier today.
I did.
And talk about some action steps that you were taking.
Sure, but just, and I believe the things I told you are the same things that I told Ms. Mush that we would do. So the crosswalk sign went out today. We have to do locates for the vertical signs on either side of the roadway, because you don't want to drive into a fiber optic cable or something like that. So kind of tedious, but also very necessary. So when we do those locates, those signs will go up. We're going to have a conversation with the Parks Department and Public Works about, you know, continuing a perpendicular sidewalk. So if you're familiar with the Cobblestone Park, it's an oval. Just having a crosswalk that has to tie into a sidewalk, it's a solvable problem. It's a very low cost, just to make sure we're all on the same page. So when that, when we have that conversation, we'll schedule that work. We do have, we have concrete bids out right now. We don't have a contract right now. We look forward to, you know, having that sewn up in April. So even if we wanted to do it right now, we don't have the bandwidth. So there's, there's a little bit of runway on that task. And then when we go out and we stripe, we will prioritize that new sidewalk that we're going to put perpendicular to the walking path, and then we'll put the piano keys as a crosswalk, right? So that's the, that's the first swipe at this, is some paint, some plastic, some awareness. Thanks to Chief Shackle. He did have targeted enforcement out there, and I think that's going to be a focus in the short term. Also going out either today or tomorrow was our traffic speed counters. It takes traffic volume and the rate at which that traffic is traveling. And when we have that baseline volume, we can take a look at what kinds of durable solutions Ms. Mush and myself, quite frankly, are advocating for in this and other corridors in town. The, 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 the challenge that we have as a community is, unfortunately, the circumstances that contributed to this near devastation exist multiple places throughout our community. We have roads that are very wide, very flat, and very straight, that people feel very safe driving fast down. Everyone could name off a bunch, right? You got your Hawthorns, your Seburgers, your Perrys, your Margos, your Treadways, Forests, right? So we could play that game unfortunately for quite some time. So we could play that game unfortunately for quite some time. So we have a challenge, we have an obligation, and I think the desire internally and externally to meet that challenge headfirst. So what could some of those solutions be? Remember when we passed the streetscape, there were some form types for speed mitigation around the TOD. You know, here's a traffic volume, here's a speed. We designed that with the consultant with this kind of solution in mind where we can take some, some objective data, you know. Thousand cars, four thousand cars, whatever, in this speed, speed lane. And here's, here's three, here's three options that we can choose from. Maybe it's a raised crosswalk, right? So a raised crosswalk is just a crosswalk that goes across the street instead of the pedestrian going down into the street where cars belong. Car goes up into the sidewalk where people belong, so it's a visual cue. It doesn't wreak havoc with our plows. It's a, it's a, it's a physical and visual cue to drivers to slow down. Maybe it's a traffic circle, maybe it's a chicane. I don't know what that solution will be. We'll look at the data, and when we have that data, we will come before you with a recommendation. And I should note that beginning in CCMG twenty-two oh two, one of the things that we talked about was working with neighborhoods to identify. Neighborhood preference for speed mitigation activities, right? So when we look at our White Oak project, particularly from the river down to thirty-third, that public outreach will be a proactive step. That we're going to take from here on out, so we have, I forget which councillor called that out in the scope of work that we brought to you that you approved with S D H. But when we get these matching grants from EndUp, we're not going to be. Forever responding. We're going to be looking at these proactively and hopefully fixing these problems before we have near misses. Because you only get so many near misses.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Yeah, Mr. President.
Yes.
I just wanted to piggyback on a few things that were brought up. One was Mr. Doomeck, the. The traffic going on to Dairy, from Dairy Queen, that's an unsafe situation. And then actually having a seven-year-old child, I guess it would be a first grader, my daughter's in second grade and I'm in fourth grade. Being struck by a vehicle today, and Mr. Heller, you happen to be here today. I represent the fourth ward in town, which is where Elliot School is located. And we have, we've had issues at Elliot School. I'm not sure how familiar you are with it so far. But from all directions, there are streets that do not have sidewalks. And the ramifications of that is that children must walk in the streets on their way to school. We do have crossing guards, but it's unavoidable, especially in the winter. Without having chicanes and traffic circles and everything in the right places. And in particular, because of Elliot, the geography around it is such that when you draw a circle of one mile around the school. There's almost no zone where kids get to take the bus to school. And particularly on the north side of Ridge Road, that's an issue because there are long stretches with no sidewalks. So it's one of the things I would, I would hope that could be considered under the new administration is. Can we have some equity with Elliot School, the number of kids that are riding buses? We also at the town are committed to try and do what we can with sidewalks. It's a tricky, tricky issue. We love to partner with them. We look at how to, when we get extra money that we can deploy to that, you know, we do look at, at those things. So just because all this has happened today, and I mentioned Dairy Queen because. The way the drop-off works is there is a row of cars that backs up onto White Oak Avenue. So the northbound, southbound traffic turning in and drop off in, in school. So that means other cars that are going, they actually drive into oncoming traffic. And there are children who live across the street from there. It gets really, really messy there. So I think there's a combination of maybe looking at buses, looking at sidewalks, traffic control, rerouting the traffic pattern, drop-off patterns. There's a big, we call it stormwater retention zone that's some investment could be turned into a place for car queuing. I think there's a lot of things that can be done. And let's please do them. As soon as something happened, we have a beautiful, a beautiful heart of a resident coming. And we've taken action from the town immediately, and we're committed to taking further action, so I hope that's something that you can look at.
Very good.
Thank you.
Okay, closing public comment, consent agenda. Mr. President, I move we accept the consent agenda.
I'll second the motion.
There's a motion, a second. Any comments, questions? Roll call, please.
Councillor Schoon.
Yes.
Councillor Mellon.
Yes.
Councillor Tulowitzki.
Yes.
Councillor Kulturitis.
Yes.
And Councillor Gardner.
Yes. Moving into old business, we have ordinance eighteen fifty-seven and eighteen fifty-eight utility rates. This is the second reading that's before the council. Wishes of the council or anything else we want to add? Tom Andrew Anderson to the memo that you wrote.
Sure, I, I know that one item of curiosity was what would be the impact on the customer's bill. We included that as an attachment to this agenda, so kind of look at a typical customer and what that would look like on a month-to-month basis.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
That was for option C.
Yes, it was. It was staff's understanding that there was a clear preference for water, sea, and storm B, so the illustrative examples are around those. If you'd like us to take a second pass at it.
Very good. Wishes of the council with the two ordinances before the council on second read.
I just have, I noticed one type, I think it's a typo. Before we're making a motion, if it wants to be corrected, on page three of the ordinance, eighteen fifty-seven, I believe. Customer water deposit in the year twenty twenty-three of the one-inch meter size. It shows two thousand thirty-five, I believe it's two hundred thirty-five.
That's accurate. It is two hundred thirty-five.
It may noted as corrected before.
Is that on the online one? Because I think we might have.
I found it online.
Okay.
Could you please, Councillor, would you tell us me one more time where it's at so I can?
It's on.
In the sprinkler, in the actual ordinance itself?
Yes, on page four, rather, under section eight dot eight, I believe, water deposits. At the top of page four.
Okay.
Customer water deposit, that one, yeah.
We have an extra zero there. Thank you.
Okay, you saw where that is, that, are we going to have discussion after? Yes, we'll have discussion afterwards. Move to accept with the amendment.
Okay, can you specify? We do them one at a time.
Yes, ordinance eighteen fifty-seven, the mending fees for the water utilities is, is the one that's before us at this time. And the one that we passed on the first read was option. Option C, water C. And I guess that would be the one that I would ask the council if we want to approve that on second read, and then we can have discussion after this.
If we actually. First read, we can actually make a motion to accept option C.
And first, at the meeting two, two months ago, or two weeks ago.
A month ago.
Or no, a month ago.
A month ago.
We had three options in front of us, option A, B, and C. And so at that time, the council that was here approved water option C on first read.
My understanding was that they asked us for which one were we leaning towards, and we actually didn't actually. Asked that on first read as option C, but if that's in the minutes, then Wendy, can you find that?
Looking as we speak.
Yeah, my understanding was the gentleman asked which one did we feel comfortable with, and we picked option C for the water and option B for storm.
That was during the work study, the couple, a meeting before that.
And that was not in the first reading. I just, I just want clarification here because I do have questions about this.
I have Councillor Schoon move with a second by Councillor Tulowitzki to consider eighteen fifty-seven, option C, and to consider eighteen fifty-eight, option two.
My correction. So is there, again, we will have discussion after we have a motion on the floor and seconded. Can you repeat the motion?
We're looking for a moment.
I'm looking for a motion.
I thought Ken had a motion.
No.
Well, he made a motion and I asked him to clarify.
Okay.
So if he wants to clarify, that'd be great.
This is the ordinance eighteen fifty-seven. Option C, mending fees for the water utilities. That was motioned and seconded and passed three zero at the last, or at the meeting a month ago. So if somebody else wants to pass another motion of another ordinance, that's fine. We can have discussion until we have a motion to second.
Mr. President, I move that we adopt ordinance eighteen fifty-seven on second reading as presented, which I note is option, is presented as option C.
There's a motion, is there a second? I'll second that. Okay, there's motion, second discussion.
Yeah, I, I personally, as we reviewed this, and I, I really. I understand the increases that are necessary here, but I still, and I believe I did have an issue with the sprinkling charges. I'm still looking at these numbers, feel that the numbers that have been come up under the sprinkling system itself are really too high. And looking at these numbers. I think I would really feel more comfortable with the sprinkling system following the same percentage increases that they are under the residential rates. For the water for both lines.
Other comments, questions? Let me ask the question, if the sprinkler rates increase is reduced, does that also then add to the increase into the resident portion?
So the rate that is provided has a certain revenue component baked into it, right? With certain assumptions based on when we'll issue debt and when that revenue will come in, and therefore the debt service, right? So if the, the question is, can we, I, I hear the question from two different angles, right? One way you could answer the question is, can we just peg the sprinkler charge to the residential rate? And the answer is absolutely yes, both ways that you come at this question, the answer is yes, right? So from one angle, the answer is yes, and we'll just go back and revise our scope. And the assumptions that we'll receive in revenue. And that will be some backend work that we'll have to do with both New Gen and with staff to. Get our pencils sharpened and our erasers out, but absolutely yes, right? And the other angle, when you can say, can you adjust the sprinkler charge to make it the same as residential, the answer is still yes. But the rates for residential and commercial will go up, right? Which means you probably wouldn't be able to pass it this evening because I don't know what the answer is. That's not everyday math as they teach in Munster schools.
No, yeah. That makes it.
So the, the, the answer both ways is absolutely yes, and it's a one hundred percent policy, policy decision. The, the staff is going to be happy with whatever you give us in addition to what we have right now.
You, I mean, the way this rate is written right now, anybody watering their lawn with a second line is going to pay almost over three hundred percent increase in five years. Yes, per month, and that's insane. That is insane.
Well, it was done on a cost, cost for service basis.
I understand it, and I voiced my opinion on that a month ago. It's still insane, and the way it's written right now, I would not be moving forward with this because that's insane.
I, I do think when we had the original work studies, that's when we came back and we reduced the amount for the irrigation. That was, was a hundred and fifty percent from year one to year two. And, and we capped that at being no more than ninety percent. So we came back and we reduced that rate at that time. So again, we, it was a lot larger than this. It's something that we want to make sure that we have enough money in the water fund and we can still do continuous projects. And again, we can also reduce the amount of projects we do, but there's, there's, there's work that's ahead of us that needs to be done also, so.
And I, like I said, this just, it just, I don't, I am not comfortable with moving forward with this part of this ordinance right now.
I recall how many people this affects.
I don't know the answer to that off the top of my head. Do you know how many water accounts have a second meter?
It is a small number, but it's, I, I don't know what that means, if it's a hundred or five hundred or.
And being, being a small number, it's less to the whole pot that we lose by lowering the rate. You know, the far more residences and commercial businesses than this. It's not a one, one person pays ten dollars less and everybody else pays ten dollars more. One person pays ten dollars less and everybody else pays one dollar, two dollars more.
Very good. Again, we'll come back to Dr. Andy's point. Is there other comments with other items within the ordinance? Again, okay. Any other comments with regards to the water ordinance and other rates or anything else that you see?
You know, I guess just to reiterate the options A, B, and C, my understanding, what, what our option A as presented last time was the highest option. And we said, can we deploy two and a half million dollars of our ARPA funds? Towards water projects to help reduce the cost to all residents. That was option B, and then option C was to cap the sprinkler rates at ninety percent. I don't believe that we had spoken about the cap on subsequent years. In, in terms, in terms of that rate. But water, water C is, was the most economical for everyone. Including the, the sprinkler rate that was presented, which is why the conversation we had last time, that's why we want that rate.
I do have one comment, and I may be miss, not remembering this correctly, but. Dr. Andy, I thought that you had asked to see what the impact would be if it was, I know it was more, it was a hundred and fifty percent, but now it's ninety, but. Did you ask for it to be looked at as like seventy-five percent at different levels, and I can't remember maybe.
I thought I did, and. I did not receive anything except for what was presented here on Thursday in regards to this ordinance. So it caught me off guard, but you know, it is what it is. My mistake, I didn't actually continue asking for that information. But the bottom line here is that the way this is written right now, I would not be moving forward with this ordinance. That's, I'm just one of five here, but that's just too high. I think that's, like I said, it's too much to be telling somebody that, no, you can't water your grass now. Because it's going to cost you so much more to actually utilize this. To actually try and keep your investment where it should be because you're paying more for a water rate. Hundred percent is a joke, Ben, I'm sorry, but I can't, I can't see that. It doesn't make any sense to me.
And for clarity, if I remember correctly. We've had a lot of information over, over the past couple of months about this, but the sprinkler, the one, this is only for the second meter, correct?
That's accurate.
And we don't know how many, that, didn't we need to know that number in order to be able to calculate?
It's, it's, it's a known number, like, so the calculations baked in. Our actual numbers of accounts, I don't know that off the top of my head, so that, that's, that's a me problem, that's not a data problem.
Because I'm just, I.
We do best by table in the motions of the next meeting, so that we can get all the figures and.
The other thing that, I guess the gentleman's not here, and I guess, as I said, it's, it's my fault for not asking him this, but. The water lines are all connected to same pipes. I guess Chris can answer this for me, right? The waters, all, all the water lines that go to all the homes are on one big pipe? Right? How many times you have breakage with? Second lines that are going to homes?
Well, it's, it's the resident's responsibility to house to the main.
Right.
Sir.
So now we're talking about, so now we're talking about, it's just the push of water, the flow of water that you're charging someone to actually use that second line.
So the way a water system is engineered is you have to be able to use the entire capacity, right? So you, you, you've got your main house line that you're doing loads and loads of laundry and dishes and yada, yada, yada. And you got this other meter, you use it maybe four, five, six months a year, six months, my lips to God's ears, right? So, but you still have to design everything downstream. So, but you still have to design everything downstream, everything all the way up to the water tank as if that second, that second line could be used as much, right? So you have all the, the maintenance capacity, not just for that one line that's attached to the main, but that main was designed with the ability to run that second meter at capacity, just like the neighbor and the neighbor and the neighbor. You start adding up all those added lines and the added capacity, that's where the cost of service comes in, right? So that's why the cost of service for a meter that's not used year round at capacity is higher because there's money in the ground to make sure that you could use it and get the pressure that you need.
So the person that has one line that's using it in their sprinkling system is actually using it year round. So you really don't know how much more it's pulling or how often it's pulling because he's using it constantly twelve, twelve months out of the year.
I think the, how I understand, how I, oops, how I remember the presentation, what Dustin's saying is you're not paying for the extra use that comes from the sprinkler, but the extra capacity that is required in the water towers, we have seven water towers. When you have two meters going to a house, you have to design two houses worth of capacity in the water tower. Because there is a situation and then you design for peak use where everyone can be in showers and running and sprinkling at the same time. And we can't have a water system that could fail under that peak use system. So the, the house that has sprinklers with only one meter, we only have to design for that five eights or that one inch meter. When there's two lines, then the design, I think it's really the capital cost of all the water infrastructure rather than just the amount of water that's being used.
But you've got two lines, you're paying for both lines, it's the same amount of water.
Right, because we have to have the capacity.
So you're paying for, you're paying for two lines, not year round though. But you're still, you're paying, you're paying for two, so, so we should change the way we're actually charging people to have a second line instead of actually charging them three hundred percent in a, in a five year span.
However, we started this discussion on February seventh, was on our second read turn. The sprinkler rate at that time was thirteen sixty-two.
Right.
On February seventh.
It was higher than this.
Thirteen sixty-two, so we, we looked at using ARPA funds and also then putting some of that money back into residents. All residents paying a little bit more for the sprinkler system, people to get a little bit, a little bit of a reduction. So, you know, again, we can, we can go back and, and say, hey, let's not do so much infrastructure, let's try to, let's raise the base rate a little bit higher, there, there's other ways to make this thing work. But again, I, I think we, we have for the last, certainly for the last two months, and, and I, I don't have the, the numbers that we looked at at first work study. But what we're seeing here on February seventh was thirteen sixty-two, that's that work study that we came back and said, hey, let's sharpen it, let's cap this up at ninety percent of the, of the rate. And again, so, so we had those numbers a month ago and, and looked at those. And then, you know, we had that out in the public and, with public hearings and, and public announcements.
And as I stated, this is, we're under discussion.
Yep.
I will not be moving forward with a, a, a dissent on this, but this stands right now. Okay, that's all I'm saying.
Very good. Other discussion, other comments with regards to water rates? Seeing none, roll call please.
Counselors.
And ordinance eighteen fifty-seven, option C.
Counselor Schoen. Counselor Mellon. No. Counselor Tulowitzki.
I'm asking a question, if the, if the motion fails, can there be a motion to table and revisit?
Well, you can always, someone can always make another motion at a subsequent time or amend that ordinance later on, but you kind of got to play this one out first.
Yeah, I'm just wondering, do we need to wait till the next meeting in order to revisit?
No, not necessarily. It depends what you want to do, I guess, with it, but.
Okay, well, I would vote yes.
Counselor Kulturitis.
No.
And Counselor Gardner.
Yes.
Okay, so the motion fails.
I can, so what, now, now, he has a specific question I can try to answer.
Yeah, so, so what, what is, what is the next step with the, with the ordinance?
So it's failed for now, but for instance, if there was some direction to the staff as far as, whatever, I'm giving an example, tying the percent increase for the sprinkler rate and making it the same as the residential rate, and you said, hey, Dustin, give me that ordinance, right? You could pass that ordinance.
Could we pass it tonight, or is that?
No.
We, we probably have a public hearing.
Yeah, because the residential rate and the business rate, everything will change. So if you wanted to pass something, if you wanted to pass something today, it would be just recalculated.
Maybe we would have wanted the table.
Yes, I agree, except for you could say, I'm moving to pass eighteen fifty-seven with the following amendment, and the only amendment being tying the one rate to the other rate. Not adjusting business, not adjusting the other residential. You could do it that way, even though, right, because then it's just a calculation that just needs to go away.
How much of a calculation do we have, though, that we know what then the resident rate's going to be?
Well, you already know what it is.
So under, 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 under Mr. Westland's example, it would be not moving the cost, it would just be lopping off that revenue requirement. And then what we would do is we would go back to Nugent and say, this is what was passed, calculate our revenue projections with this. And then we went caucus internally with staff and say, okay, well, let's refine our list again. So there's big, we had needs and wants, we got rid of the wants. Now there's big needs and little needs, let's get rid of the little needs, and that's okay. That, that is a thing that municipalities and government does all the time, we're happy to do it.
So I'll open this up for more discussion with regards to ordinance eighteen fifty-seven.
So it's just a matter of moving forward with the ordinance with the amendment to mirror the increases for the residential rates, the sprinkler rates to be mirroring the residential rates, the percentages.
Right.
What's the verbiage that we need?
So that, in my opinion, that's the only thing you could do tonight because that would not affect the other rates that were published for the public hearing, okay?
And, and that would leave us with a revenue shortfall.
Well, I don't know if, I don't have the numbers in person, so I don't know if I'd take a shortfall compared to what was presented tonight, yes. But shortfall as to what you have today, no.
That is an accurate characterization.
So. I, I think the real request was.
But Steve, there are not that many people in the sprinkler rates, so it's not going to affect the overall.
Charlie, we don't even know what that number is.
But we don't know what it is, but it's not going to be a great amount, it's not like we've made the change to the residential.
If, if we come back with different rates at the next meeting, are we going to have to have a second first read, a month off for public hearing, for public announcements, and then the second read a month later?
If you are adjusting other rates upward. Right, because you publish that X, if you stay below X, I think you're okay. But what Dr. Kulturitis just asked me was, what would the motion be? And it would be a motion to approve eighteen fifty-seven as amended as follows, to have that second sprinkler rate increase percentage mirror the, the first residential rate percentage. If you did that, I think you could do that tonight because the only thing you're doing is lowering one category. You're not increasing any other category.
And, and couldn't we do something like, because when I look at it, I mean, my expectation was maybe the first year there would be a ninety percent increase for the sprinklers due to the cost of capacity, et cetera. I guess I hadn't contemplated that after that would be another fifty-five the next year, and then another fifty, and another fifty-eight. I think as Dr. Kulturitis had mentioned, when you look at the five years out, it's an astronomical increase. So a middle ground might be ninety percent in year one, but then years two, three, and four, the subsequent years would have the same percentage rate as residential.
Not the same rate, but same rating.
The, yeah.
Your percentage. If I can make, make a suggestion, I, I don't feel comfortable after we spend time with Nugent trying to find the right rates of finding what the, the, the infrastructure needs that we have in the town. I understand what the concept is right now. If we want to come back in the next two weeks to look at what just lowering one rate would cost or what would that affect our services and our infrastructure, we can come back at the next meeting two weeks from now and pass the same ordinance with one rate being adjusted. Is that correct?
So it'd be eighteen fifty-seven as amended, the same way you would.
Right, but I don't feel comfortable, I don't think discussing that and changing that one rate tonight without any kind of even a, you know, a, a one week review of this makes a lot of sense. If, if we come back at the next meeting with one rate being reduced, then we can see what the effects, then we can see what the effects are.
Yeah, that makes sense. Because I understand it, it's too late to table the votes, we just put it on the agenda for the next meeting.
And, and the reality of is, if, if we still feel that the infrastructure needs are that, are of what they are, lowering that rate is going to increase another rate, and we're going to have to go through a whole, you know, another public process for this. So I think the direction that we're going to give staff, and correct me if I'm wrong, counselors, let's look at reducing that one rate, the water sprinkler rate, and how much that affects the future needs that we have within the town. Is that what I'm hearing?
That sounds good to me.
So, so that we can have an understanding of the materiality of that decision.
Right.
And.
Yeah, and, and, and the scope of how much that reduction, right.
Exactly. I'd like to hear from, you know, from staff, water department, what, what is the impact, or how could they, how comfortable are they with it?
Okay, does that make sense?
And so, can I say one other thing? To have some maybe flexibility with the way, have some flexibility with the way that that rate gets adjusted down for sprinklers. So there was one proposal, let's make the sprinkler increase the same percent increase as residential customers. There was a group, a tacit agreement previous to this that there would be a cap because the uncapped was going to be already in the first year at well over a hundred percent increase. So there was agreement, option C would represent ninety percent increase in year one. So I'd like to see maybe an option with input from staff, bless you. Year one increase of ninety percent, and then flat increases are increases that track with the residential customers in subsequent years.
Okay, so what I'm hearing, just to clarify, is that we're going to go back and we're going to give you two pieces of information. Well, pieces of information along two tracks. One track is, what would the revenue impact be if we were to adjust the sprinkler rate to the same proportion as the residential water rate? Option one, what would be the revenue delta and what would we reduce from our capital improvement plan? Option, the second track is, look at the sprinkler rate at ninety percent of its current self in the next rate adjustment, and then in subsequent years, peg those subsequent years to the proportional residential rate. Look at the delta and then the impact to the capital improvement plan as proposed, is that accurate?
So, and, and to be clear, to make sure we're on the same page of my idea anyways, is that the twenty twenty-two rate that's presented, which is the ninety percent cap, that would remain the same? Future years would be based off of that.
Twenty-two.
Fifty-four ninety-eight or whatever it is, would be based off of that and only increase of the same rate that residential.
We understand.
Okay.
Can I say, I have an outstanding clerk treasurer's office and through the, via electronics, we now know that we have a hundred and four five eighths meters, seven hundred and ninety-one inch meters, forty-four one and a half inch meters, twenty-six two inch, one three inch, and one four inch. So we thank, we thank Robin from at home.
What, say that again, say that again, just because you caught me way off guard, I'm not sure it means anything.
We have a hun, so our total number of users, I didn't do the math, but we have a hundred and four residents that have a five eighths inch meter. We have seven hundred and ninety that have a one inch meter. We have forty-four at one and a half, twenty-six at two, and then one each at three and four. Or their sprinkler meters.
Okay.
Sprinkler.
Okay, okay.
I understand, we were just asking information, and I have information that I.
Okay, so does, does the town manager have, the motion fails, we're going to have a, a, an effort to try to keep this motion alive for second reading for the next council, for the next council meeting by not lowering any, by not raising any rates, but lowering some rates. Okay, now, let's move on to the stormwater second read. Ordinance eighteen fifty-eight, amending fees for sewer and stormwater utilities. Any, any wish from the council? This is second read. This is the option B, storm B, that was passed at the last council meeting or a month ago, voted three to zero.
And as I understand it, the, between the two options, there's a faith-based institution. And as written, the monthly charge for any institution is not to exceed seventy-four dollars.
That's accurate.
We adopt ordinance eighteen fifty-eight on second reading.
Is there a motion, there's, there is a motion, is there a second? There's a motion, a second, any discussion?
Yes.
Yes.
I would come up with this not exceed seventy-four dollars again, I don't remember that.
I don't have the proprietary equation that the consultant used. If you'd like, it sounds like we're going to have a conversation on rates in two weeks, I'd be happy to give you a more detailed answer.
The only reason why I'm asking is whenever I hear, whenever I see the word, not, or the phrase, not to exceed, I always want to know, why is that in there, not to exceed, so.
I think it was for the storm, as it currently is, the not to exceed was a policy decision to give a break to institutions of faith.
As I recall the conversations.
That not to, that not to exceed in storm B as presented is eliminated, and it would just be the, it would be the commercial use.
I think the, you know, status or the current state is that the residents and businesses subsidize all stormwater for faith-based institutions that pay zero right now, although certainly the water from their parking lots needs to be handled by the town. So we wanted to have a more equitable solution, so say, let's share that cost. But what we did not want to do is create a new cost for a faith-based institution which could have a material impact on their operations. I'm not, also not sure where the seventy-four dollars came from. I could make assumptions, but they would then just be making it up. Doesn't feel like seventy-four dollars would be a material impact to any of those organizations. And I'm not sure, like, how close they're going to get. You know, it, it's likely to be much less than that for most of our organizations.
Very good. Other comments, questions? There's a motion, a second in front of us, any other discussion? Roll call please.
Counselor Schoen.
Yes.
Counselor Mellon.
Yes.
Counselor Tulowitzki.
Yes.
Counselor Kulturitis. Counselor Gardner.
Yes. Okay, moving on to new business, there's a geotechnical observation memo in front of us. Mr. Anderson, anything to add to that memo that's in front of us?
Beyond the scope of the memo, no.
There's a proposal there, is there, and there's a recommendation from the town manager?
Mr. President, I would authorize town manager to engage with advanced engineering solutions for continued geotechnical monitoring and observation.
Second, motion a second, any discussion? Hearing none, roll call please.
Counselor Schoen.
Yes.
Counselor Mellon.
Yes.
Counselor Tulowitzki.
Yes.
Counselor Kulturitis. And Counselor Gardner.
Yes. Next on the agenda is the agreement between the town of Munster and S E H for telecom service. Mr. Anderson, anything to add to your memo that's in front of the council?
Mr. Streets.
Or Mr. Streets, sorry about that.
Yes, so this proposal would allow S E H to review the leases drawings and check the work for performance with approved plans for when telecom company. With, uh, approved plans for when telecom companies place, uh, their equipment onto our water towers. Uh, this would also allow S E H to provide us with the final inspection. And these are some of the services that S E H currently provided the town with, um, in the past. Also, in addition, staff is recommending that the telecommunication reviews be conducted under the supplemental agreements. Which will streamline our accounting and payment process, this would also allow S E H to create a separate project number for their work. In the past, S E H has invoiced their invoices, uh, to the town under the general services agreement. And while this method is, um, it does work, it is cumbersome for both parks.
Very good, there is a recommendation in front of the council?
I move we authorize the town manager to enter into a supplemental contract with S E H. Of Indiana LLC in the amount of ten thousand one hundred fifty dollars for a telecommunication review and inspection.
There is a motion, is there a second?
A second.
Motion a second, any discussion?
Does the, the telecom provider reimburses the town for these services or not?
It would be a condition of the lease and that is a, not anything that I have seen in a lease that we have, but that is a good point. Uh, to incorporate in future leases.
Accounting for it this way would make that much more straightforward.
Absolutely.
Very good, roll call please.
Counselor Schoon.
Yes.
Counselor Mellon.
Yes.
Counselor Tulowitzki.
Yes.
Counselor Kulturitis. Counselor Gardner.
Yes. Item number C, resolution twenty ninety-two, managed parking. There's a resolution that supports the board of parks and recreation, um. At their last meeting, they implemented a managed parking solution at Centennial Park, uh, Mr. Anderson, anything to add to this?
No, uh, the, the, the spirit of this resolution is to, uh, show, uh, concurrence with the park board. To, uh, let them know that they're not out on a limb by themselves. Uh, and that the town council as a policymaking body, uh, supports the initiative of, uh. This, this, this direction by the park board.
Very good, uh, any discussion?
Mr. President? Yes, I have a few, uh. Ideas or issues with, uh, with resolution two zero nine two, um, so I'd like to share those. Number one is in the fifth recital clause, whereas says, uh, staff convened to examine. Our town council members, park board and staff convened to examine potential revenue options, um, to make up this revenue shortfall. I've only been presented with one option, which is the paid parking option. So I'm not sure that that's been fully fleshed out. From the models and projections. I'm also not fully convinced that we will raise the two hundred and fifty thousand dollars or whatever the target is through this additional parking so that. Maybe this won't raise the revenue we need in order to pay for the maintenance. The third thing is, I, I think we do risk sending a message to surrounding communities, a sort of anti-welcoming message. Um, that I, I think part of the spirit of this activity is around visitor filtering, filtering and demand management. Uh, for the parks and, um, I, I think that can send a message to surrounding communities that. You're not as welcome here as we are in your parks and I think that's a real, you know, consideration. Uh, as mentioned in the F A Qs and was brought up, uh, on, on the call, uh, earlier today. Uh, I am worried about impact on Sentinel Village, I'm not sure, I, I don't think any of us can predict what will happen. That's a really critical development with exciting new businesses there, if we have, start having parking overflow. Um, I don't wanna have a negative impact on those businesses. Um, and then as Mr. Durek mentioned, uh, you know, the vendor is a business, they will want to make money, I'm sure, doing this. And in a situation where they're maybe not having the parking demand that we had expected, they're not going to be making. Maybe enough to cover their costs or enough to make this viable for them. And the one thing that's incentivized in, in the proposal, I know there's no contract yet, we can still work it out, is, uh, is, is fines. So they can receive, they can retain seventy-five percent of fines, which it reads can go up to a hundred and fifty dollars. Uh, per visit under certain scenarios, so the vendor might actually. If they wanna make money, have an incentive to find ways to find people who haven't appropriately parked. If they overstayed, they paid for two hours and they stayed for twelve hours and ten minutes. I'm just imagining someone from a neighboring community comes to the park, has a good time. Pays their fine, pays their fee for parking even in the case where they have an app and it all, you know, works well. And then later in the mail, they get a fine for fifty dollars, seventy-five, a hundred and fifty dollars. Uh, and probably then a collection agency coming after them because the vendor definitely wants to have their money, I just. I ha- I can't support, um, this given all of those, uh, conditions, I think the parks need to be about fun. And not frustration or bad feelings, I know when I've been not treated fairly by, uh, 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 an establishment. I feel it when I drive by, you know, like, ooh, I don't like driving by that place, uh, because gave me this bad feeling and that's, that's what I think. Is a risk, um, with going with this proposal, I'd like to see other ways that we could make up, uh, the revenue. I do appreciate the, um, I think the original proposal was a large capital cost. Uh, and an annual maintenance cost and so I appreciate that the arrangement, um, does limit the risk financially to the town. I just think there's still a reputational risk to the town that I'm not sure we've fully considered, those, those are my comments.
Very good, thank you. There's a resolution before us, other, I guess we should probably have a motion in, in a second, first before we have discussion, I probably screwed up there Steve, but that's okay. Uh, is there a motion for, uh, in support of the resolution twenty nine two?
We're, we're at that resolution number twenty ninety-two.
And there's a motion, is there a second? Okay, is, for discussion now, sorry, yes.
Just want to, uh, remind Council Tulowitzki that if I were going to Chicago, which I have done frequently. And I put in the money in the parking meter and I'm five minutes late getting to the car, I get a fine. Uh, from the city that pays no attention to the fact that I had been there earlier and had paid. It wasn't paid at the time, this is common practice throughout the country. And we're no different, we would be no different than any other city.
You can't use, you can't pay at the meter, you have to use an app, uh, most people can use apps in states.
Very good, very good, other comments, questions? Again, this was in the news you can use recently, I, I, I believe I've shared all the comments with the counselors, um, and the park board. The, of the, the fifteen or so comments that I received in the news you can use, so counselors should have all received those informations. Um, uh, from that information, anything else? The, the one recommendation that was changed from the working committee to, um, the park board was that each resident, um. Household will get to have the option for two passes, so that is the one difference, um, in there, so hearing no others, other comments?
One other thought that just came up, it was mentioned there's a one-year, we're in, we're not entering a contract, but the proposal is to enter a one-year contract. Uh, with the vendor, uh, which could make it hard, if, three months in, it's not working, right? It could make it harder for us to exit that, so we may just wanna look at what is a turnaround clause or where is a moment where we, we decide, hey, this is really working? I hope I'm wrong with all of these assumptions, I really do. Um, and, and if it starts to, to be, put the town in a, in a bad spot or in a bad light, how, how can we get out of that?
Dave, are you the one that's gonna be reviewing this?
Yeah.
Just making sure.
So a, a more generous exit clause for the town.
And so far what I've seen, the, it's like a thirty-day out with no penalty. So, that's about as generous as you're gonna get.
And other cities for their major parks, Michigan City for, uh, for, for the beach and places like that, do charge during the, during the summer season.
Very good, other comments or questions? Seeing a motion there and a second, uh, roll call in support of resolution twenty ninety-two?
Counselor Schoon.
Yes.
Counselor Mellon.
Yes.
Counselor Tulowitzki.
No.
Counselor Kulturitis.
Yes.
Counselor Gardner.
Yes. Moving on to reports, are there any reports in the council? Any portfolio, portfolio reports? I do wanna call the council to the March ninth memo from Fire Chief Mark Heiduk regarding the na- national incident management. That all the counselors need to be aware of and need to participate in, I think chapters one and seven. It was March ninth's memo from our, uh, Fire Chief Mike, Mark Heiduk. Uh, April fourth, eighteenth, May second and May sixteenth, uh, the upcoming regular town council meeting and redevelopment commission meetings. Those being announced, that I have a motion for adjournment. Second, motion a second, all in favor? Very good. Mr. Castro, sorry to keep you sitting there for so long, we'll move on to our, uh, redevelopment commission regular meeting. If we could have, I, I call this meeting the order of the Munster redevelopment commission on Monday, March twenty-first, two thousand twenty-two. Uh, roll call please.
Commissioner Schoon.
Rosa.
Commissioner Mellon.
Present.
Commissioner Tulowitzki.
Present.
Commissioner Kulturitis.
Present.
And Commissioner Gardner.
Present.
And our liaison from the school board, Mr. Castro.
I am present.
Thank you, nice to see you, as always.
Uh, public comment, we, is there anybody here in the public that would like to speak to the redevelopment commission? Seeing none, uh, we will move on to the consent agenda.
We accept the consent agenda.
Second, there's a motion, a second, all in favor? There is no old business, no new business, no reports, announcements?
We should do a roll call on that.
You're not gonna be by record here.
Commissioner Schoon.
Yes.
Commissioner Mellon.
Yes.
Commissioner Kultur- uh, Tulowitzki.
Let me think.
Commissioner Kulturitis and Commissioner Gardner.
Yes.
Okay, now you can voice.
Okay, now there's no other old business, new business reports or announcements, uh, motion to adjourn, so move. Second, motion a second, all in favor? I now I need to apologize to Mr. Heller, cause I said this is gonna be a short one.
When I told my wife. I looked at the agenda. Yeah. We were thirty-five minutes before we got to the end.
I said.
Oh, nice talk.
We were told, you know, just a few days prior to that, there is a resignation that's coming. And then it was change, there's retirement.
They have, they have, sitting there, I can't think of. But now that you're here.
Sue, whatever, I said, no, I'm gonna do this, I need to come out, I need to make sure this is.
But it was that, I, I do gotta tell him so quick, he showed up and was a little kinda frazzled and, and, you know. Suit didn't fit quite right, and you know, shifting around, like, what's the matter? I had to decide to either rent revenue suit or come in a luggage twice.
I got off the plane midway and I'm standing there and all the luggage is coming off, pretty soon nobody else is there and I'm like. Four hours later, so I'm like, I go to the luggage and they're, we don't, you're playing your stuff. Alright, so I mean, I was like, I'm, where's the closest bin warehouse? And with, there's no way I'm gonna have something that fits me, there's no way.
I got a Hail Mary for you.
There's no way. Yeah, I have a knock. Yeah, so I was like, oh, maybe they'll, I'll bring this warehouse, maybe they'll have something, I walked in and they're not gonna have anything that fits me. So we start looking, put something together, takes it back, pins the, pins the line, says, here you go, sells it to me, put it on and went to interview.
I got the job.
How you doing, nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you.
Thanks for coming back. Alright. No, no, no.
Very good. Very good, thanks, thanks.
Absolutely, thank you for giving us. I'll see you in May. Good to meet you. Yeah.
Yeah, hopefully I only have to deal with. Capacity of that. Like one kid. You guys.
Yeah, right.
Three of them out without, without. Principal's office.
Wendy, nice to meet you, welcome aboard.
I know you're you're hammered.